The June 4th, 2020 Board of Ed Policy Committee meeting. And I'm just going to do a quick role call. Courtney Troutman, I don't know, maybe I'll just go down the list and everybody can. I see Beth Hostler.
Yes, here.
Ellen Walsh.
I'm here.
Kathy Schmidt. She's going to unmute herself and tell us she's here. I know she will.
I'm here, sorry.
That's okay. I always like the pause with the mute. And Margaret Harrell.
Here, present.
And Mark Cohen.
Here.
And then we also have Dave Smith.
Here.
And Todd Mooney. We're going to make him unmute himself at some point. All right, well, he is here and waiting in the wings for us if we need him. So if I could just take this time to call for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. So we have one public comment that I will read. The public comment is from Jan Dorner. And the comment reads, "I reviewed the 32 policies listed for discussion during this meeting. All but one seemed appropriate. I got to the last one and was concerned with the changes that were recommended by press through the Illinois Association of School Boards. The change seems to be pointing fingers to others and away from the district. When parent or community member communicates to the district, they of all people are probably not aware of whom the quote relevant individuals close quote are to whom address their concerns. These people are probably not aware of the Board policy 6.235 access to electronic networks to be able to abide by the standards. This could chill the parents' community desire to communicate for fear that they are not sending it to the right person. I do not understand the reason, need for this change and highly recommend this change not be recommended for approval by the D205 school board." Okay, so that is our only public comment. So that being said, we'll move on to approval of policy committee meetings. A minute, sorry. And the approval of the September 12th. I think this should say 2019.
You're right.
Policy committee meeting. Does anybody have any changes to the September 2019 minutes? None being heard. The minutes will stand as reflected. Okay, so we're going to move on to the policy discussion topics. My plan is to kind of walk through the October 2019 and then the March 2020 change updates. I will kind of just indicate the policy number that we're talking about. And briefly point out the recommended changes that press is making. And then if any discussion is warranted or if anybody wants to talk about it, we talk about it. And then if not, we can agree that those changes need to be made and move on to the next policy. So the first, and Ellen and Margaret are going to keep me on track when I make any mistakes, which are inevitable. So the first October 2019 policy under review is 2.20. The policy is for the school board. And it is the policy committee that's reviewing it. It's the powers and duties of the school board indemnification. So the changes that they're requesting are to number three, under the powers of the school board. And the duties, talking about employing a superintendent or other personnel, making employment decisions, dismissing personnel, including determining whether an employee has a willfully or negligently failed to report an instance of suspected child abuse or neglect. And then there is an abbreviation for the Abuse and Neglected Child Reporting Act throughout the policy. I have nothing to discuss and agree with the change, so anybody else?
Looks good.
Hearing nothing, we will adopt the changes from us for 2.20.
Bring it to a first reading.
And bring it to a first reading at our, what's the next meeting?
It'll go to the June 16th meeting.
June 16th meeting. And all of these that we agreed to, Ellen, will all go to the first reading on the June 16th meeting, correct?
Correct, and then the second reading will go to the July meeting.
Great, thank you. So the next one is 2.70 concerning vacancies in the school board, filling the vacancies. So the only change with this policy is that they are recommending that the school board vacancies be filled within 60 days versus the current 45-day window. I'm going to just kind of throw it out there. Is there a downside to giving the board and the superintendent an extra time to make an appropriate filling of a vacancy?
I think the shorter time plays to your advantage, actually. You get somebody in there quicker. Like they're extending it.
Yeah, they're changing it from 45 to 60. Yeah, we can always fill it earlier. I was just going to say it's not saying we have to fill it later, so I don't really see a downside to it from my perspective. Is everybody comfortable with that change?
Yes.
Okay, so the 2.70 change will stand as amended. Moving on to 2.100, Board Member Conflict of Interest. So seems to me that they're adding in an entire paragraph about board members participating in contracts that are federally or state awarded. And defining when that conflict of interest exists. Obviously, this makes sense to me. We shouldn't be participating in those kind of decisions when we have a conflict of interest. Is there anything anybody wants to discuss regarding it?
No.
Makes sense.
Okay, 2.100 will stay as amended, will go as amended. Moving on to 2.105. So this one has to do with the Illinois Ethics and Gift Ban Act. Other than some kind of modifications of how a code is represented, the true change to our policy comes in the end of the policy. Complaints of sexual harassment made against board members by elected officials.
Yes, you're right.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so I think it's a pretty significant paragraph and quite extensive. But obviously, it is encouraging the prompt reporting of harassment by anyone in our district to include board members. So I don't see a problem with the change. If anybody else wants to discuss it or sees a question about it.
Then.
Okay, hearing none, 2.105 is adopted. Next one is 2.110. And this has to do with the qualification term and duties of board officers. So there was minor changes in the actual policy. A couple of things adding, like obviously if somebody is under the umbrella of a complaint of sexual harassment, they cannot then be considered for a position as an officer. But I think the interesting thing to me is something that Margaret pointed out. That our policy is different than press. And I think we should just make sure everyone's aware of it, that the policy for press recommends that the board elects the president from its members for a two-year term. Our policy is for a one-year term. And I think Margaret is obviously in the best position to kind of give us some insight into why we have that difference. So if you could, please.
Yes, so the idea behind the one-year term was that to make allowance for any changes that may come up or occur where the president was either unwilling or unable to the president and/or the board were unwilling or unable to keep the meetings of the offices the same. So it gives the board flexibility and it increases our flexibility. We can change, we can keep everything the same if we'd like, or we can make changes as may be needed. And that was a decision made from prior boards that each board has reviewed thus far and decided to continue with this practice.
Lot of discussion on this one in the past. There was a lot of discussion on terms.
Okay. So I mean, was, go ahead, Mark, sorry.
In that very first paragraph, it says that the officers are elected or appointed by the board at its organizational meeting held in odd-numbered years. But then it states that the elects officers for a one-year term. If it's supposed to be every year, then that odd-numbered years section should be struck.
Good catch.
Yep, yep. Yeah, agreed. I mean, Ellen, is there more background that you can provide on the one-year term?
No, there was a lot of discussion, like Margaret was saying, whether or not. And to be fair, there was a lot of discussion around keeping the term longer because the thought was that somebody is just getting familiar with the position and now they might be gone, and now a new person. So there was much more discussion about making the term length longer than one year. But in the end, it was determined that they would go with the one year. And hopefully, if the person who was in the position was doing a good enough job, they would see fit to reinstate them. You know, like Kara's been the president for how many years now? But yeah, there was big discussion about that and a lot of people. And this is through several policy committees, and I think Margaret's probably been on them for the past, you know, number of committees that we've been doing, you know, this discussion. But a lot of people like the longer length so that the person could become comfortable with the position before they're voted out for no reason. For obviously a reason, but without giving them a chance. So that's where the discussion came in.
Yeah, I can definitely see where there are the, you know, the idea that, you know, it takes a while to learn a role and to be comfortable in that role. I also see the idea of the flexibility if by chance something occurs that there needs to be a change. And that may be just the idea that that person is no longer able to fill that role due to change in circumstances or something else. But there's that flexibility within our policy that allows that. But that's a decision for every board.
And I'm comfortable with that because I think changing times call for adaptation. And I certainly don't want us to be boxed into a policy where somebody feels like they have to stay somewhere where it doesn't fit into, you know, their other commitments in their life. So I'm comfortable with that. And if everybody else is, I think we just have to, like Mark pointed out, make that change to that paragraph, Ellen, to reflect it correctly, that we're not holding these appointments and elections in odd-numbered years. We're holding them annually.
I think we probably could just take off that whole held in odd-numbered years beginning in 2011. Just a period after organizational meeting.
Yeah.
Agreed?
Agreed.
Yep.
Agreed.
Nice, okay.
Great.
Good with that.
Okay. So that was 2110. Moving on to 2200. This concerns the type of school board meetings. Specifically, there were changes made to who, what types of subjects can be considered at a closed board meeting. I think that's the heart of this big change, other than kind of grammar changes in other areas. But most notably, the board and board committees may meet in a closed meeting to consider the following subjects. The first one is the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees. And here's the change. Specific individuals who serve as independent contractors in a park, recreational, or educational setting, or specific volunteers, is what they're adding into that list of subjects that we can discuss. And I think that, given the number of contractors we seem to employ, this does seem to be a warranted addition to what we can, under the policy, discuss in a closed meeting.
Yeah, this makes sense to me since we work with different outside groups, park districts and other areas. So this would just give us that flexibility.
Same for me. Margaret, anything?
No, I just think, and you're right, we also, from time to have, time to time, have contracts with our perhaps members on the cabinet or other things. So I think that makes a lot of sense.
Great, great. So we agree to adopt those changes on 2200. So 2260 has to do with uniform grievance procedures. But before I forget, Ellen, there's a couple of places that I noticed throughout here.
I changed it already.
Okay, yeah.
I changed it on mine.
Right.
Yep, thank you.
Just boot that Cohen dude out and put Pavone in. Cohen out, Pavone in.
I tried, Mark, to keep you in there.
I'm good.
I think she was just hoping, if she left your name in there for so many of these policies, you would think you weren't leaving, is I think what she was hoping. So I think the only, I think the only real significant change to this is that in addition to complaints involving superintendents, they're adding in board members was the only significant change to this one, which seems completely makes sense to me.
Yeah. And I'll change Mark to Luke.
Yeah, and I'll just, if you want me to note it where I saw it, but I think there's a few places, yeah, I figured you did. Okay, so we'll adapt to 260. Moving on to 415, identity protection is the issue. And it really just adds a paragraph to talk about additional protection for individuals to safeguard information under grant awards, which sensitive information and the confidentiality of that information. And it's our duty to ensure that that's maintained, so it makes sense to me. Anyone else?
Yeah, no, makes sense to me.
All right, so adopting 415. Going on to 430. And I should, should I be saying that the administrating reviewer had been giving approval to all these? Should I be mentioning that, Margaret, Ellen? No, it doesn't matter, okay. So I just think that. Yeah, yeah, I apologize. So it just seems, so to me, Chris Welton, his only comment was, you know, he's okay with the change of chief investment officer should be treasurer. That's what his note says. So they're changing everywhere of chief investment officer to the word treasurer.
Yeah, well, what's funny, Courtney, is that the policy has always said chief investment officer. And because they added the new paragraph, starting with chief investment officer, now it was brought to our attention that it said it in there and he wants it as treasurer.
Yeah, that's small change, small change.
Yep, okay. So if we're good with that, 430 adopted. Moving on to 460, having to do with operational services purchases and contracts. And it seems that it's just kind of redefining or, you know, yeah, redefining each new employee of a contractor that provides services to students or in schools. Having to do with their physical fitness to perform those duties. Nothing from me on this one. Everybody good?
Yep.
All right, 460 adopted. 480.
Did Beth hear that last one? She was away from her screen.
Sorry, keep having to.
Were you okay with 460, Beth?
Yes, 460, yes, yes.
Thank you, I'm sorry. All right, so 480. Has to do, and I'm so glad we have the printout of this because I can't imagine scrolling.
Oh, yes, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you, Ellen, I just, as I'm reminded about this. Operational services, accounting, and audits. It looks like they're adding in some definition of the capitalization threshold and the policy regarding disposition of district property. Any questions or discussion? All right, if none, we'll adopt 480. All right, so the next one is 510. Equal opportunity, equal employment opportunity, and minority recruitment. I think it really, and this one Luke did get added, so this one Luke's already in charge of. And so I really, Mark, do you want to elaborate on this? I think it really is just defining the types of criteria or categories of domestic violence or gender violence.
Yeah, the term gender violence is new to the policy, but that's just a reflection of, you know, Title IX protections.
All right, any comments or discussion?
That's fine.
510 is adopted. 520 is workplace harassment prohibited. Mark, anything here?
No, this is just, again, staying current with language reflected in federal law.
Yep, any comments or discussion? All right, 520 adopted. 530, hiring process and criteria. And this is the same thing, Mark?
Yeah, it's just some language updates. It, you know, includes the abuse and neglect, if that's in anybody's background, they cannot be or they should be, that should be considered in employing someone. And then there's a little further down, we can't ask about wage or salary history anymore, that's state law now. The only workaround there is that if they've been employed by a school district, all the information is foilable.
All right, any questions or discussion? All right, 530 is adopted. Has to do with drug and alcohol-free workplace. So there was some addition, Mark, do you want to walk through this, just the additions to this one?
Sure, the change to legal cannabis, or cannabis now being legal in Illinois but still illegal federally, prompted a change in the policy as well as Ashley's Law, which allows for marijuana products, THC products, to be delivered by a qualified individual to a student for whom it's medically necessary. And so there's just, this is just a reflection of what is recommended best practice and policy. The cigarettes are also covered in here as well.
So I think the only question I have when I was reading through this is that they added in that on-call terminology. And having a long, long history of being on-call, what, how many of our employees does that impact? And how soon, is there a procedure where they're notified that they're officially on-call so that they can then make the correct choices to be in line with this policy?
I would say that, you know, if you're, if we're anticipating a major snow event, you know, and we need our maintenance employees to come in at 3:00 in the morning, start shoveling sidewalks or clearing snow, that's part of it. Also could be applicable to administration. When there's things that, you know, let's say a large event going on at the school, maybe you want to make sure that obviously, maybe if the building principal was, you know, York has a big dance, if the building principal is not there for some reason that, you know, that they're available to be, you know, address any sort of issue or emergency.
Makes sense. All right, any other questions or discussion?
I think you brought that up. I mean, it certainly makes sense. I think it's just kind of a difficult whether you know that you were on-call or not. So I think that's somewhat going to be a challenge, but it makes sense.
Yeah, and that's why I brought it up. I mean, you know, there's there's an administration's view of who should and when should people be on-call, and there's an employee's view, right? And so I feel like it is a, it's ambiguous, right? And that's why I worry that it puts us in a spot. But I mean, is there a procedure, I guess, Mark, is my question? Is there a procedure to let somebody know other than a planned school dance or something that's I mean, obviously, stuff that we can't plan for, got it. It is what it is.
Yeah, I mean, if, yeah, if we have a pipe burst at, you know, 11:30 at night on a weekend, you're not going to anticipate that. But now granted, we do have certain folks who, you know, they're on building check, you know, they're coming on, checking boilers over the weekend, they're walking the facility. Those individuals, you know, should be ready to serve. But in terms of being on-call, again, this just applies to weather emergencies, things that we can reasonably anticipate.
Planned for, okay.
Yeah, this is down the line. At some point in time, it seems like since this has made its way to our policy, that there should be something in a procedural handbook that kind of defines what's on-call and what's not on-call. Expectations for being on-call and what's not on-call.
Agreed, Margaret.
Yeah, I think that will be helpful to the employees so that they're not, like, we all want them to be set up to succeed, right? And so I think that if it's clear understanding of how they can do that, it's better for everybody.
In my three years in the district, I have not seen an issue with this.
Okay, that's good to know. All right, so we will add 550 to the reading. All right, moving on to 590, abused and neglected child reporting. And I think really this is just a kind of a definition of what negligent failure to report means, right, or when it happens. And I do like that they've decreased the amount of time that the training needs to occur for our mandated reporters. I mean, one year seems like a really long amount of time for to have somebody on a job without having undergone the training.
Just so you know that when we hire, when we onboard folks, part of the condition of hire is that they finish, we have a series of videos that new employees have to We have a series of videos that new employees have to watch with the Global Compliance Network, GCN. And that mandated reporter training is a part of it before they even really get started. You know, that's part of the onboarding process, and then we require that these modules are done every year.
That's great.
We go above and beyond, this is, this is the law, but GCN videos are presented to staff every year.
Awesome. All right, any other questions or discussion about 590? All right, moving on to 5120. Employee ethics. Conduct and conflict of interest. Mark, do you want to talk about the paragraph that was added in?
Sure, I'm just, I'm scrolling, I don't have it in front of me on paper.
See, Ellen's really is mad you're leaving.
Again, this, yeah, this is, this really is, that addition is just regarding ANCR.
Yep.
And then the, and then the Government Accountability and Transparency Act further down, making sure the conflicts of interest are identified.
So any other questions or discussion for 5120? All right, we'll adopt that. Moving on to 5250. So it doesn't seem, you know, there, the press change indicates that there. This is regarding professional personnel leaves of absence. And our policy is different than the IASB version. So I, I'm just wondering. I think that we're going to keep our policy the way it is, and my, my only question is, when they're asking us to change that wording to include the word licensed. How do we make those changes in the bargaining agreement? Is it, or is it already in there, I guess my question is?
The licensed is, I'm not sure what case happened, where an unlicensed physician or an unlicensed therapist or an unlicensed, you know, individual made a recommendation for accommodation for somebody or, or recommendation for leave. It certainly didn't happen in Elmhurst, this is something that we, we can certainly put in our policy. Because if somebody doesn't, I mean, if somebody comes in with a note written on the back of a napkin from somebody who's not licensed. You know, they're, I mean, they, they have to have some sort of an official script that has a. You know, that has their, you know, credentials on it, and their license number on it, in order for it to be valid, so. The word licensed is just a, just a legal update, nothing more, it's not going to impact us really in any way.
So I guess my, I guess my question is, it would, the change would be to the part of our policy where we basically say, refer to. You know, our agreement. All right, so there's nothing in our actual policy for, that we need to change, but is there something that should be changed in the agreement? Or is that, it doesn't say licensed already?
Pointing that out now. The, any sort of like sick leaves that need to be verified, we actually have the right in the agreement, for example, with the teachers. If a teacher, if somebody's out for more than three days, we can make them visit a physician of our choosing. For, you know, for return to work, should we wish, you know, wish to do that. There's, the, the agreement is, the agreement does not necessarily hamstring us in terms of changing our policy to make, you know, making sure that the person is licensed. There's that, there won't be an issue, the language does not get that specific in the bargaining agreements.
Okay.
So are we saying we're keeping our current policy as-is with no changes, correct, Mark?
We could add the word licensed.
Where would that go?
But I think, I think the only place that would go is in that first area where you say, refer to the agreement, that's why I was asking. We would have to change the agreement to actually add this word licensed in, so.
Oh, then we don't, you're right, I'm sorry, going back 14 documents, yeah, you're right, that's correct.
Keep it as-is.
Keep it as-is.
No changes.
Okay.
Okay, and then going on to 5290, employment termination and suspensions. And this goes back to, I think, the state law that we've already talked about, willful or negligent failure to report an instance of suspected child abuse or neglect. And I believe that that is the only change.
Right.
So, any questions or discussion? All right, we're adopted. So then moving on to 660. So this has to do with curriculum content. And it has to do with changes in Illinois. Curriculum, correct? Mark, I think.
Civics.
Right, the addition of civics in the sixth, seventh, or eighth grade. I did, I did kind of have one question about. The curriculum, I, I noticed that. In the curriculum content for. Not that number four, where in kindergarten, I'm looking at our policy. The curriculum in grades four through 12 can be funded or private grants or federal government, whereas in the. The press recommendations is kindergarten through 12. And then. In grades kindergarten through 12, age-appropriate internet safety is what press recommends, and for us, it's in grades three or above. Do we, do we, is there a background there on why the, the age and grade ranges are different than what press recommends?
It could have been through the. Process, I don't have all of my. Documents with me, so I don't know what the history is off the top of my head, to be honest with you. Maybe David Smith knows about the curriculum for the internet safety, if he wants to jump in. Oh.
Well, I don't know if I can answer the question, I mean, internet safety curriculum, there's a, there's a requirement for internet safety curriculum in order to meet the E-Rate guidelines and so on.
Well, so that's what I'm confused, press is saying in grades kindergarten through 12, age-appropriate internet safety must be taught. And now ours says in grades three or above.
I, we could go with press's version, and I would say it's probably appropriate to do so, since now we do have the devices going all the way down to kindergarten with iPads.
I believe, I believe it should be, it should be K to 12.
And it's, and it is already happening, our librarians, as part of the curriculum that they deliver, they use. Currently, I know the resource they're using is BrainPop, and we had worked with them, I, when I was in, the role that Scott Grunz is in now. A few years back, we had tried out, I encourage a couple of them to look at. Common Sense Media is another, another program that is widely used. And it actually has a lot of support from private industry, it's a free resource, so. We are doing that in our lower grades, beginning in kindergarten and first grade.
Yeah, I, I think it's incumbent upon us, and I'm great, it's, I'm very happy to hear, especially if we're putting these devices in these kids' hands during the school day. I, I'm really happy to hear that we're doing that. And then, go ahead, Dave, I'm sorry.
I'm just going to add real quickly that on the Technology Committee, through the Technology Committee, but I think there's going to be a spin-off, there will be revisiting of the curriculum, and I believe they are looking at K-12, so I think it's, I think it's consistent to make it K-12 in the policy.
Do you want it to read the entire number five from press because there's additional verbiage?
I mean, it's asking, it's mandating education about appropriate online behavior, interacting with other individuals on social networking websites and in chat rooms, and cyberbullying awareness and response.
So do you want to incorporate the entire number five from press into ours?
I mean, that seems to me to be logical, I don't know, so Mark, where do you feel like that puts us, I don't.
Having not, having not reviewed the kindergarten, or not having reviewed the learning and teaching side of these policies, I'll say this, that generally press, you would be surprised if you look at school code, the amount of very specific things that are given to us that we must teach in curriculum. And oftentimes, the press policies are just exact carbon copies of what is in school code. I'd be, although, I don't have the press policy in front of me, I'm just looking at what's on Board Docs. I would guess that we probably, and we may have missed a policy update here, which is the reason why there's a little difference between our grade levels and what the press policy says, but we, we should probably reflect the press policy and make sure that we're, we're following it. Because oftentimes, it's just a direct copy and paste from school codes requirements.
Yeah, I, I agree, and they're incorporating the policy number of 6.235, so I, I think it should read that.
And what about number four, Courtney?
So number four really has to do with kind of. That's, so for us, it says. Same thing, four through 12, everything else about conflict resolution, violence prevention, stuff like that, and. And press says kindergarten through 12, I'm just wondering. Are we doing something like that already, and why are we making, why, why does our policy differ from what they're recommending?
I could, I can check with Nikki and Scott, confirm that what press says in four and five is actually correct. And if that's the case, put that forward, if not, I will let you guys know that there was some difference.
Right, yeah, the one thing though, that is, it says, if it can be funded, it can be, it should be provided, if it can be funded by private groups or the federal government, so it does not require that it must be, it just said, it can be funded. And the ideas of things to stress within that funding, within that training. So I think whether, you know, I'm just saying whether there's something, I don't think that's a prohibitive statement in number four.
I think the only difference.
To doing.
There is a grade.
Yeah.
At a certain grade.
It's just. Yeah, I think our number four just reflects that we're doing, starting in fourth grade, and the press reflects that we're starting in kindergarten.
Right, well, actually, press reflects that it can start in kindergarten, it doesn't have to, it can start in kindergarten.
Right, 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 sometime.
Um, this is, Dave, on, on the, on number five, I don't have the, the. Press version in front of me, I have the, just the public, it says, you know, in grades three or above. Is the word "or" in the press copy?
No, it says in grades kindergarten through 12.
Okay, okay, I didn't, the word "or" is a little bit confusing to me, so as long as it is more clear in the press version, that would be good.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I guess, Margaret, if, on, going back to number four, because our policy also reads, provided it can be funded. If we change that to kindergarten and left the provided it can be funded, it really isn't boxing anybody into mandating them.
Exactly.
Yes, exactly.
So I would like to see it changed to kindergarten for both of those. And it sounds like for number five, we're already doing it, and for number four, it would be great if we could do it, but if we can't, there's still that.
Right.
Provided, that little loophole.
Well, for what it's worth, we have, all of our buildings are PBIS schools. And so PBIS covers four, and that starts at kindergarten. The relationship between drugs, alcohol, and violence, we use there through the Elmhurst Police Department, so. You know, the, these programs are, I mean, this is addressed very commonly through both of those programs in multiple school districts, so we're, we're covered here.
Great, okay, so make the changes to read press version.
Yes, for number four and five.
Okay.
That makes more sense to me. Thank you. All right, then we are moving on to 6150. Home and hospital instruction, and Dr. Volpe does not see any. Challenges to this, saying that he agrees with the recommended language, clarifying that a written statement is required, and then further. Delete. Why am I cannot get this, thank you, this word always gets me, the professionals that can produce this statement, you know, doesn't everybody have one of those words?
Oh, yeah.
This is, that's my word. Margaret, Margaret's going to chime in every time she sees that word from now on, because she knows I can't say it. So this makes, this makes sense to me, so, any discussion or questions?
No.
Nope. All right, adapt 6150. Moving on to 6300, graduation requirements. So my, my understanding of this is basically, is an attempt for press to make sure that kids know what kind of financial assistance is out there post-high school. And they're, they're basically doing that by forcing them to apply for grants and assistance, or acknowledging that that opportunity is there for them, but they don't choose it.
This is actually state statute, or this is.
There you go.
Comes from school code.
So here is a question, and this is a process question, what, what. How will this be enacted? Are there plans already for this inaction of applying for the FAFSA or the waiver?
It's going to be something we're going to have to adapt to, but I'm sure that, you know, through, through our counselors at York, they're oftentimes the ones, you know, working with their seniors and starting to figure out their transition plans for when they graduate. And so this will have to become part of that, part of that process.
Yeah, yeah, that's just, I agree, I just, I'm just curious, I, I know that that counseling department. It's great, it's also, yeah, it's also swamped, and there are, there, you know, there might be a sizable number of students who choose not to go to college and/or maybe then believe they don't have to see the counselor, so just. Just to note that operationally, we need to make sure that there's a plan in place that we catch these students, now that it's a policy.
A good point, Margaret. Okay, so that's 6300. Moving on to 720. You got the Luke thing, right, Ellen?
Yeah, yep, I already got it.
All right, and so this, you're up on, this has to do with harassment of students. And really. Anything here, Mark?
No, this is, making sure that we put it in front of, we put it in our, our handbooks and. Just more of a cross-reference with policy 2260.
Great. Any questions or discussion? No? All right. Moving on to 7150. Agency and policy interviews, and I will just say that. I'm sorry, police interviews, apology. Dr. Volpe appears, says, that it appears to me that our current policy addresses many of the procedural items that the new policy asks us to create. No inherent challenge to adopting the new structure. I, I actually love the addition of the recognizing the impact that an interview is going to have on a student, because whether they're a witness or other, I mean, it does have an impact on that student, so I really applaud this addition. All right, any questions or discussion? All right. Moving on to 7270. So this one has to do with the administering medicines to students. Mark, do you want to give an overview, or do you just want me to?
You know, Courtney, I've had a lot of conversation with Michael Volpe. You know, Courtney, I've had a lot of conversation with Michael Volpe and Jen Conwell regarding the new paragraph on administration of medical cannabis.
Mm-hmm.
And I gave you, I think I sent to you guys part of their discussion, um, regarding this. They're not sure we should have this in our policy at this point. They went back and forth. Michael was asking if we had any students currently who this, you know, refers to, Jen said, in the past, we've had one. Um, and that was it. Um, so in the end, I, I said, do we put this in or do we not? And nobody got back to me. So I don't know where they stand at this point regarding the medical marijuana or the cannabis. So Mark, you might know if it has to be in here? I don't know.
Well, if we, if we end up having a student that requires it, then we're going to need to have something to give ourselves some, you know, give ourselves some guardrails. Like this is what we will do, this is what we won't do, this is what the student's responsible for, what the parents are responsible for, you know. And so this policy is a, is a reflection of Ashley's law. But I also understand Jen Conwell's concern that, you know, this is a state law that is not backed by federal law. And so that's, that is the, that is the hang up. Um, we could, the federalist, the first part of the policy administering medication to students, that part of it is fine. I just make sure we talk about that, that.
Yeah.
And that should change. Um, the administration of medical cannabis, you know, Michael said we could, we could, you know, sit on this for a little bit, if we so choose. But then if we had a situation where a student was, came to us with a prescription and said, here you go, I need to, you know, this is what my doctor says, then we will be a little bit behind the eight ball. Um, in terms of having a, you know, now granted, we, whenever we have a student that has a medical concern, we do work with them one-on-one in order to, make sure that we have, you know, the appropriate supports in place. I mean, that could be as simple as what happens if a student comes into, in a school, uh, in a cast, right? But if we, if we have, what the policy I think gives us is, if we have a student that has prescribed medical cannabis, these are the rules by which medical cannabis can be brought into our buildings. Versus if we're not having anything in writing, and somebody said, you know, all of a sudden we catch a student with cannabis, and they say, well, it's medical and I have a prescription for it. Well, if we have a rule in place that says that, well, if you, if you wanna, if you need to, if you have a prescription for it, this is what you should have done, then that allows us to handle it, um, you know, handle it in, in a, in an appropriate way. So, well, I know Michael expressed a few concerns, and, and there were some concerns, um, from Jennifer. So I'm not sure if, I wasn't sure, Ellen, if there were any other conversations. Am I summing up your conversations with Michael correctly?
Yeah, you are. Yeah.
I, I, I think for me is, I agree. I think we need the guidelines. I am, I am not in favor of adopting a policy that puts any of our nurses in a position that they are not comfortable with. And when I look at Jen's kind of rundown of what, um, you know, what a nurse in a school setting can and can't do, not, and they are not legally allowed to administer medications without orders. And the orders must contain very specific information, including dosage. And registry cards are not physicians' orders, and dosage along with other specifics is needed, and that's not usually indicated. I, I feel like we're putting them in a really bad spot. And I, I do feel, but I, I'm balancing that with the, we do need some guidelines. Um, but I, I worry about putting our nurses in that spot.
Mm-hmm. Well, there's some, there's some redeeming qualities, like you, you know, the, the fact that the product may not be administered in a manner that, in the opinion of the district of the school, would create a disruption to the educational environment. I mean, those, there's, there are safeguards in this language that give us the ability to, if, if a student should present, uh, the need for this, gives us the ability to control the situation versus not having something in writing.
I mean, is the option just to take the, the nurse section out as an, someone who can administer it? Is that an option?
Or needs to be.
Right, because I, like I said, I, I agree that. Yeah. Well, and the FDA approved piece as well, so.
We can hold up on this piece. Um, like Michael said, he didn't feel that it was a, you know, real-time sensitive thing. Um, and we could bring it, you know, put it forward with the few revisions in the first page, and then put this for the next time we have a policy committee meeting and see if anything has changed. And that would be, that would be Kathy's responsibility to keep track of that.
Right, yeah. I hear you, and I, I guess you're right. The only, only thing is if we, the school opens in August, if, school. Then, you know, how might we manage this? So I, yeah. While I, I agree, it's not a get it done in June and July, we, we have to be sure this is somehow, you know, maybe addressed very close to the beginning of the school year.
Yeah, and maybe it's a discussion that, um, you know, Jen and Michael, you know, need to have a more extensive discussion and find out where that's, where they are comfortable with, but I do think we have to figure this out.
And you know, Michael will be gone at the end of the month also.
Right.
It'll be Kevin who will, uh,
Kevin.
addresses it. Maybe he has more, you know, maybe he has different, uh, insight or a different, uh, perspective on this.
Yeah.
That we're missing.
So if, and then I'm, I'm asking this of Margaret and Ellen, but can we move forward with the, you know, that first section of changes administering medicine to students, and then hold off on the administration of the medical cannabis?
Yeah.
Section. I, I would feel comfortable with that.
Definitely.
And just so we can get some more insight and discussion about it, because I really just don't wanna leave our nurses hanging out there doing something they're uncomfortable with. And, and it sounds like based on their guidelines are not allowed to do.
Um, it, but again, it, the, the policy is written in such a way, just my, my viewpoint. It says that the state laws, you know, which they, they named the Compass Use of Medical Care Cannabis Program Act, allows it to be administered by one or more of the following individuals. So it says it may be administered by a nurse. It may be administered by the student themselves under the supervision of a nurse or administrator. It may be supervised by a parent or guardian who registers with Illinois Department of Public Health as a designated caregiver. So these, these are may's. This, these are not musts. And so.
Right, but I guess my question is, if the nurses aren't willing to do it, why are we even saying it may be that person? Well, but, because based on what Jen is saying, they're not gonna do it.
Right. So, but again, I hear, uh, Mark's point that, okay, so it may be a nurse, but it, it doesn't have to be a nurse. So if you can find someone else to do this, if you can find someone else to do this, then we can move forward with. If your parent is able to do this.
Parent has to come in or, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, and that's why I was wondering if we could keep this paragraph and just take out the nurse portion. It may be a parent, or it may be the student.
Okay, I mean, that would be, that would be a.
But is it, is it worth trying to dissect it?
Or do we leave it and then let the, um, nurses decide in their policy, you know, in their procedure, how they're going to handle that based on the other guidelines they have to follow? Does that make sense, Mark?
Yeah, it does. I mean, thinking practically, I realize that we wanna give everybody flexibility. We don't wanna force some people to do something that's not in their comfort zone. But, you know, we haven't seen a single situation where the federal government has tried to override the state governments and the legalization of cannabis, whether it's for medical or even recreational use. Uh, certainly the medical use part of it is, is, um, you, you, is, was first accepted Illinois, now, now it's legal for recreational use. So the, um, you know, and we have not, you know, there has not been a single person that's willing to crack down. There's, you know, a large group of people that think that eventually it, it's gonna be pulled off of the Controlled Substances Act completely. So I don't, I don't see that. Can, I don't see the, I understand the ethical concerns, I really do. Um, I think long-term, this is gonna be something that's just gonna be, you know, it applies to so few students, and the students that this does, do apply to are so sick. You know, like, for example, you know, Ashley's Law with the young lady with the seizure disorder. I mean, this is, these are rare cases.
Yeah.
So, but I, I understand if we wanna, if we wanna sit on it, there's no danger in sitting on it, but it will be something we're gonna have to do sooner rather than later. We can't sit on it too long. Because eventually, you know, serving eighty-five hundred students a year, we're gonna have a situation where we're gonna have a student that's gonna have, um, this prescribed to them, and then we need to be prepared to manage it.
Right, right. And that's my only concern in moving part of it forward, is that it's easy to forget this portion. If we move part of it forward, it's easy to forget. If we hold up the whole policy, then we know it's, it's standing, you know, it's waiting for us.
Ellen, do you know?
We gotta come back to it.
Yeah.
Ellen, do you know if Michael reached out to, uh, forensic legal counsel?
I, he did not.
Okay. And this may be, this, we may talk to our attorney, and our attorney says it's, you know, Ashley's Law, you gotta do it.
Yeah.
You know, so.
That's very. Yeah, that's true. That's true.
So why don't we, why don't we take this back and, and run this by legal counsel, and we can have some more information to you pretty quickly?
Okay, I could do that.
Great. And, and maybe Kevin and his, you know, in his new role, has some insight that and experience and other, and, and his former position that he can bring to the table for us to help us kind of balance.
What do you wanna do for June sixteenth if we don't have a resolution? Because this is gonna have to go through the three of you. Um, I've got, do you wanna just bring this whole policy back at another time? Or do you wanna put forward the first page, and we'll look into the second page, or put it forward if I have?
I kinda agree with Margaret. Like if we start piecemealing it, we're, things are gonna get lost. So I feel like if we pull the whole thing, and then we will, can reevaluate the whole thing after talking to Kevin, after a little more research, and then talking to forensic and see where we're at.
Okay.
You're right, Mark. We might have, they might be like, yeah, whatever. It's, you have to adopt it.
And if we have that answer by Friday.
It could go forward.
Right, then we're done. Right.
Yep, I'll talk to them tomorrow. I'll give them a call tomorrow.
Thank you, excellent.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so I think we have just completed the October twenty nineteen updates.
Right.
Um, and we are moving on to the March twenty twenty, a much smaller stack. All right, so the first one is two point one two five. Um, which addresses board member compensation and expenses. Guess they're paying for the first bag check.
Yeah, they added ride sharing.
And Uber. You can Uber and check a bag. That's basically what this says. You can Uber and check a bag. So any discussion or questions about this one?
No.
All right. Um, moving on to two, one sixty, um, the board attorney. So just kind of, I, you know, defines who the Board of Attorney, the Board of Ed. Ellen, can you, um, replace that in the first sentence as a Board of Education, put that word may back in?
Yeah, yep.
It was struck with the rest. May retain legal services. Thank you.
Yep.
Any questions about our board attorney, um, identification and parameters?
None.
Okay. Uh, moving on to five sixty, expenses for general personnel. Looks like. See here, hmm. Oh, here we go. Sorry. Um, additional requirements for travel expenses charged to federal and state grants. There's a, a long list, nine bullet points of, um, expenses the requirements they must meet to be, um, reimbursable. Seems reasonable.
Yeah, that's just, that's just get up.
Yeah, yeah, makes sense. Okay, five sixty, good. Six, two eighty is grading and promotion. And I think it really is just a, um, including the performance on standardized tests, I think, changing some wording. Um, required by the.
By the state.
Yep, required by the state. Um, any comments or discussions?
No.
Moving on to seven, seventy. This one is attendance and truancy. Again, I think it's just kind of adding in some identification of, of the codes that reflect, um, the policy. Anything additional? Yeah. Anybody else see anything? Okay, nothing noted, seven, seventy, will be added on to, in reading. Um, so the next one is seven, ninety. Now, we currently do not have a policy for release during school hours. Um, and this press would address that, um, kind of define what requirements are necessary to be released during school hours, early dismissal announcement, and for voting. Um, Mark, how was this handled before this? I mean, was it just kind of understood, I'm gonna go vote, and students were allowed to go vote, or were they released early with a parent's note? How was it handled before we even had a policy on it?
Oftentimes, they would just vote before or after school, or their parents would sign them out. I mean, it's really, it's not gonna change anything operationally, it's just putting it in policy.
Okay. Makes sense to me. All right, questions or discussion?
Goes along with procedures, just now it's.
Official. Yep. All right, moving on to eight, ten. Um, community relations, connection with the community. Um, think, so this is eight, ten. And I don't think there's many changes, or I think our policy already.
Bev wants us to keep the policy the way it is. She doesn't wanna make any changes.
Right, so she does not want to add in like examples of, you know, using social media platforms, Facebook, Twitter. I think this, I think, um, they're, they're understood in our current policy, and I, I agree. I don't think we need to start detailing those kind of details. So I think this, the way she's communicating with the community is pretty thorough.
Yeah, stuff changes so quickly.
I know.
Yeah, right.
Yes, that is true.
All right, so any questions or discussion about eight, ten? None. Okay, so we'll adopt. Um, so then eight, one, ten.
Eight, three, oh.
Eight, three, oh. Oh, sugar, sorry, eight, thirty. I'm all mixed up, eight, thirty. Um, this has to do with visitors, um, and their conduct on school, school property. And Bev has reviewed this policy and agrees with the changes. And I think it just expands kind of the who is on the property and what, what the property consists of, and the behaviors that are expected. I did find, Mark, and maybe you can help me, that paragraph about the exclusive bargaining representative agent, does this, has this always happened anyway?
Yes. So I mean, if we have, if one of our bargaining units was meeting, uh, you know, with their, like Arnavez from the IFT, or Chris White from SEIU, um, I mean, they, they come in and usually are, I mean, most of the time, if they're coming in, most of the time they're coming in to meet with us too. So.
Yeah.
So that's, yeah, that, there's no issue with that.
Okay, great. So it was always just done, and now it's just kind of being reflected in the policy?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, all right. So eight, thirty is adopted. And then finally, last one, eight, one, ten. Um, so this one has to do with community relations and how, um, community members can, um, contact the district. Um, I will say, I, there was an email, Margaret, um, asking Bev for some clarification on why its change was, uh, brought forward and was it really necessary, and I did note that the justification, the footnote from the press recommendations basically indicates that it's, it's basically discouraging school community members from engaging in the disruptive practice of mass C C-ing district staff. Like, so basically mass emails that are going out. I I wonder if this happens, right, like is our, is, is everyone in our district staff getting mass emails, C C, you know, if a, a topic that's very specific, is everybody getting C C? Because I do worry that the community will view this kind of change as us trying to restrict their communication. Because I do think, especially with number of changes that happen in personnel, it's sometimes confusing to know who to email.
Yeah.
So I, I do worry that this will be interpreted poorly. But I also want to be sensitive, like if our district employees are just getting spammed with tons and tons of blind copied or C C'd emails that have absolutely nothing to do with them, I, I do think that is something that we should consider when discussing this.
If I could just throw in here that the way our email groups are currently set up, they are not open to the public. If a member of the public happens to be part of an email group, then they are able to, able to email to that group. So I know this may not be a policy question, but I'm just speaking from implementation standpoint. It's, it's not really possible right now for somebody to spam a large group unless they're a member of that group. So I just wanted to put that out there, you can, guys can discuss whether that needs to be a policy piece or not, but, you know, we, we, yeah, I just want to mention that, so.
And so, Dave, that, that's a great point, and so what about from like marketing, I mean, our, our district employees, because, you know, we can all guess what everybody in the district's email is, if you know their first and last name. Are they, is there a filter for that type of email communication as well?
Well, there's, one of our email appliances that we have does, well, you know, through algorithms and stuff, it does more or less detect what's considered marketing, and it does put a, I, I know that, you know, those of us that work for the district see it, they, it puts a little tag at the front of the subject line that says marketing. It, it attempts to identify what's considered marketing email. It's not perfect, but it does a pretty good job. So I, I'm not trying to sway you one way or the other, I just wanted you to know that, you know, to, to mass email our district employees, you would either have to be a member of one of the large email groups, which is not likely, or somehow get like a very long list of email addresses and compile your own, you know, your own list, so.
I, I think that, thanks, Dave, because that is very helpful, and the challenge with this is it appears, it could be perceived that we are trying to minimize communication, and that's not, the intent of here is community relations. So we want to make sure that our community, particularly our parents, feel very comfortable contacting appropriate staff, so I think that we're protected. My suggestion is that we, we exclude that statement because we are in essence protected from this mass marketing that could incur, and leaving that statement in, I think will minimize the, the perception of openness and transparency.
I agree, Margaret, I think that it's putting too many parameters on the community being able to contact us, and unless it's a problem that we need to address, which it doesn't sound like, from what we're hearing here at least, it is, then I think it would be leave that out personally.
I agree, I don't, I don't, I, I agree, I think that although, I'm sure the, the suggested changes, although well-intended, don't apply here in our district, and I, I do about the perception of what this policy change is trying to do, so and then, and hearing, especially hearing from Dave, I, I, if, if they're not getting spammed and they're not receiving hundred emails a day, I just don't know that this policy reflects what, what it's trying to accomplish.
So leave our policy as is.
That would be my recommendation.
Okay, that would be my recommendation as well. Okay, so I believe that that is all of our updates. Are there any addition policy discussion topic updates that anybody wants to add in? And just, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Margaret.
No, no additions, I was just going to say, and that is, you know, so the next step is we would bring this for the first reading to the June sixteenth meeting, and then for those, then the next one is, would be the July meeting, is that the plan?
Yes, so the first reading will be at our June sixteenth board meeting. The policies will be presented and read then, and then.
She froze?
Nope.
I think she froze. I think she's frozen.
Okay.
So first reading, June sixteenth, second reading, July, second, second reading and adoption at that point.
Okay.
Adoption after the July meeting, and I may have used the word adoption of policy throughout the evening, but I just meant that we are all agreeing, the adoption happens after the second reading in the July board meeting.
Correct, correct, thank you, perfect.
No, thank you. All right, so any other policy updates? No? All right, in that case, I will call meeting adjourned.